Broadcasting to all attendees.
Yeah, you are live.
Thank you. So just as, just to let you all know that now if there are attendees on the line, they would be able to also hear.
Can we tell if they're there? From our screens?
I can. Tell they. Hmm, I see phone numbers. There are two call-in listeners right now.
Okay, great. Well, it is 6:31. Without any objection, I think I'll, I'll kick, kick it off and get started. Thanks, everybody, for your patience with this new virtual platform that we're having our Housing Commission meeting. With, I appreciate your willingness to be flexible in these weird and challenging times. Just to note that all members of the public will have a chance to address the board during public comment later in the agenda, and we'll, we'll talk more about how that will work. Each board member also, as we're going through business, will have a chance to individually speak to each item. If you'd rather not speak for whatever reason, you know, you don't have anything to say on it as a board member, that's fine, just say pass, and that will help facilitate that. That conversation. We have to do things a little differently since it's, we can't just glance over at each other, especially for the folks who don't have their their cameras turned on. Also, if you would, board members, if it's possible, can you, can, can remember to do so? State your name before speaking and making a motion. That'll make it easier for Dez to put the minutes together, I think. To have that introduction. To, to remember and to be able to tell who's speaking at any given time. And we will take all of our votes by roll call to facilitate that ease of being able to understand who's, who's doing what, since we're not all in the same room. As well. So that's sort of my, my opening set of comments. Any questions from the, the board members before we, we dive into the agenda?
I just wanted to make a note. I have to head out probably in around forty-ish minutes, so if I cut out before, then I do apologize.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, um, I, I guess if, if we can kick it off after all those preliminary comments, um, can we do the roll call, Annette? Like we normally do?
Yes, we can. So here I go.
I think you said Casey, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Irene.
Irene, you're muted if you're speaking.
Say Irene, I know you're here.
There she is.
I see you, Irene. Say here. Irene, you're muted. Uh-oh, now we still don't hear you, Irene.
Hello, did you hear me now?
Ah, there she is.
Okay, sorry, this is the old commercial.
Okay, so. Um, just for the purpose of minutes. Irene is here. I am going to take just a second. Jennifer Ferguson, one of our commissioners is calling me on my cellphone, actually. One moment, please. Hello? I am very sorry for that. As I tried to pick up Commissioner Ferguson's phone call to me. One of our applicants, Andy Sasse, called in at the time I hit my button and was also asking if he was in. I confirmed with him that I see him as an attendee. So for my co-host that is helping, um, the number ending in 116 is one of our attendees, just so you know, and that would be Andy Sasse, and he will be wanting to speak on the public hearings A and B when we get to them. Jennifer is trying to call in, but she's having no success, so I think we're going to continue with the meeting so that we can keep moving. And I am really sorry, I left off. Irene said here. Carrie?
Here.
Thank you. Jim is not here. Larry?
Here.
And Jennifer is having technical difficulties. The roll call is complete.
Thank you, Annette. All right, um, as you can see on our agenda, um, we have, uh, our first item is an invitation to have a motion for a time limit for public comment during our, our general public comment period. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. It's Larry, so moved.
Carrie, a second.
All right, so we'll, we'll actually put some meat on those bones. Larry, I, make sure I'm, I'm not speaking for you, but I believe the motion on the table is in order to maintain the order of an online public meeting, you move to adopt a rule pursuant to MCL 15.263 subsection 1, limiting public comment at this meeting to two minutes per individual.
That's correct.
And I have a second by Carrie?
That's correct.
All right. All those in favor, um, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do a roll call vote, so I'll ask Annette to do a roll call vote on that motion. Annette, would you, would you do that for me?
Yes, I will. One moment, please.
Larry, if you're talking, bud, your mic's muted.
Sorry. Is there any need for discuss? Geez, I just lost my.
You're good.
Come on. I'm sorry, but I just lost my connection, I think.
We hear you, Larry.
Yeah.
You're fine.
Okay, well, you can hear me, but I, you can't, I can't see any, well, yes, I can, I can see you. I was ju, oh, there we go. I, I was just curious. Is if in the instance in which there might be some extenuating circumstances, do we have the authority to extend the, the time period someone can speak if it, if, if in our opinion it's really important, or are we, does this, will this rule be very strictly enforced?
So, um, Larry, I'm, um, I guess I'll speak as the chair. You know, I would much prefer to enforce the rule pretty strictly. That way we aren't getting into a situation where we're making subjective decisions about whose comments are important and whose are not. So if you're uncomfortable with the two-minute mark, um, and you want to change it to a different time, um, I would, I would think we could certainly entertain that amendment.
No, I'm not. I'm not really uncomfortable with that. I just wanted to know if there was a just what your thoughts were about that, so that, that's fine with me.
Does anybody else have a, any questions or, or concerns or comments that, from a, a board members want to chime in here? I'm sorry, neglected to do that initially. All right, well, I'll take silence as acquiescence. And, uh, uh, you know, if, if you're having trouble chiming in, if you want to wave your arms about, I think I can see you. Change it to the great Brady Bunch view, uh, just in case. Uh, Annette, if you could, um, call the roll?
Yes. Casey?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Irene?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the ayes have it unanimously, so we've got, um, we've adopted that motion to limit public comment to two minutes per individual. All right, this is a different, I'm, I was looking at a different agenda. Which one do you want me to follow? Annette, the one that was posted online or the, this one in front of me? Are they the same?
Um, I think now we're at the same, I, there was
Oh.
Different, um, do you still, okay, your screen sharing is paused, resume share. Oops. Hold on one moment, please.
All right, so, um, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. This is Ed.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a, a motion to approve the agenda from Ed and a second by Larry. Annette, I guess we're gonna do our roll call votes. Come right ahead, please.
Okay, yes. Casey?
Yes.
Ed?
Aye, sorry.
Okay. Irene?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Uh, and Larry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm trying to find, um, Annette, that, oh, there's the more traditional agenda. Let me go find that. That'll make me. All right, um, just for everybody's note information, what I'm, I'm using that more traditional, now I'm using the more traditional layout of the agenda. So, uh, item C is the, um, suggestion that we adopt the, uh, time limit for public comment, so we, we disposed of that item. Now we're to item D, which is approval of the minutes from our February 20th, 2020 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Carrie will make the motion.
Okay, so I've got a, a motion to approve the minutes from February 20th, 2020. Uh, do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a second from Ed. Annette, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Casey?
Aye.
Aye.
Irene?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
All right, so we've got a unanimous adoption of the approval of our minutes from February 20th, 2020. Do we have, uh, our next item is commissioner concerns. Uh, any com, commissioner concerns that you all, uh, would like us to hear today?
I don't have any.
I have none, no.
None for me.
Irene, just in case. Okay, I think I heard a no from Irene.
That was a no.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, uh, since we don't have any commissioner concerns, it's time to consider written communications slash comments from the public. Do, is there anything that we need to know about, Annette?
I have no, uh, additional written communications that came in that would be added to this particular meeting. And so at this point, I think that we would just have our, um, public comment. I know we have two attendees.
Okay, so we'll move to public comment, uh, just to give you guys a, a preview of what's going to happen now, because this is, uh, pretty new for all of us. Each caller in our queue will have two minutes to address us as the board. At the end of the two minutes, they'll be placed on mute. They're on mute now. And then callers will be identified by the last three digits of their phone numbers. So for the callers, I think we have two, is that right, Annette? Right now, we have two in the queue?
Yes, I do see two.
Okay, but, um, so when we call on you, um, callers who are in the queue will let you know what last three digits of the phone number we're, we're looking at essentially to recognize you as as, um, having the, the floor, um, and then we'll unmute you. If you don't wish to speak, however, if you're just in the, in the meeting to, to listen in, you can feel free to just say pass, and then we can go on, um, to the next person or, or go on to our next item of business. If you clearly, if you choose to speak, it would be great, although it is not required, if you would state your name and address, especially now, um, where we can't see anybody. It would be especially helpful if you were to do that, although it is not required of you in order to speak. Okay. Any questions about that process before we make it real? I'm gonna do the long teacher pause purposefully to give everybody a chance. Okay. Um, all right, Annette, from a technological point of view, how do we push the on button for our folks in the queue?
Yes, we have someone who will be doing that. Um, we know who, we know who's in the queue. They've both texted me and identified the last three digits of their phone number. So, I think, uh, and Heather, I know you're there. At that, should we hold on them and give our staff report and then we can call them in to give their, uh, additional comment?
So the process is, is that what we'll do is I will still, I need to take the steps of allowing them to speak, and they can just say pass, but we do have to recognize them.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go ahead now.
Yep.
So caller with the, uh, phone number ending 455, you are unmuted and you have two minutes to speak if you would like to speak. Otherwise, you can just say pass.
Uh, David Straub, 1650 Kendal Boulevard, East Lansing. I'm actually with Falcon Point Holdings. Uh, I guess I'll pass public comment and, uh, and, and move on to public hearing when you're ready.
Okay, I will put you back on mute.
Good evening, commissioners. Andrew Sasse. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Community Resource Management Company and New Millennium in relation to 725 Grove Street, and I will pass until we get to the public hearing.
Thank you, both of you. All right, any other public comment that, uh, we didn't know about before this moment that we need to get to? Okay, long teacher pause over. Um, I'll, we can move into our next item of business, which is a public hearing. Our first item is the consideration of an initial rental license hearing for 4001 Gallup Road. Annette, do you have a staff report for us to kick us off?
Yes, I do. Yes. Um, I'm hoping perhaps you can all see my screen?
Yes, I can.
And so the first item on our agenda is for a class three rental license for up to two unrelated persons or a family. And this is at, um, the address of 4001 Gallup Road. The owner is Falcon Point Holdings LLC, and the legal agent, Robert Schroder, East Lansing. And I, as noted earlier, uh, David does represent, um, these entities. So this is a two-bedroom, two-bathroom site condo, attached to car garage. This is, because it is a condominium, uh, detached condominium project, but if you'll recall, we still need to go through the items for policy resolution in 2002-8. All of those were attached to the packet information. This is, uh, Mr. Schroder supplied copies of provisions of the condominium master deed and association bylaws related to the rental of these units. There's also the proposed lease that is through MTH Management. I did make a note, um, and David may or may not have something to say about this, and it just may be, it's a proposed form lease, and they would be making the corrections or cutting and pasting maybe from a prior use. As I did notice, the form lease, I'm sure it's used universally, uh, across the state, as it would appear, because it does talk to bulk trash removal, and in, I think, land, or in Detroit, and I had suggested they would want to be sure that they make changes for that when they have a a lease here for East Lansing. Um, and then there was, uh, something about recycling. Item 10 speaks to recycling, yet does not state that recycling is provided by, um, the city of East Lansing recycling. And then there was something about the landlord will monitor and force, I don't think this is an issue in this particular place, but I found it interesting, monitor and force regards to no kegs or alcoholic beverages at the premises. That was a, something I had not seen in a lease before. Uh, so Mr. Schroder did send notices to all of the current condominium owners, as he has required through the policy resolution. He still has control of this particular condominium project, um, but he did let everyone know, and he, it having control, has said, uh, he certainly does approve of doing this. There's 102 units in this particular project, and at the time, um, that we put all this together, uh, the developer had notified me and confirmed that 25 of those units were sold, still being under the number needed to turn over, uh, responsibility to the condominium association. I'm here for questions. I can show attachments if need be. And in reviewing the requirements of the code and the information that we have received to date, the recommendation would be for a conditional class three rental license that allows up to two unrelated persons or a family to reside in this particular dwelling.
All right, any questions for Annette?
Annette?
Yes.
I'm not a commissioner, but I do have a question. Do you say, um, no alcohol on the premises?
Well, the lease had a, um, a portion in it that said the landlord will monitor or enforce in regards to no kegs or alcoholic beverages at the premises. And this was the lease provided that MTH apparently uses, and is a proposed lease. So the applicant may be able to answer what that means, or if they're going to use it here, or if that was a matter of a cut and paste issue, um, that they'd be changing, so.
Is, is that allowed?
Well, I don't know what they mean by monitor.
Okay.
There's something in there, but I did not see anything in the condominium bylaws, per se, so that's why I think we would need to speak to that.
Yeah, so it's just a very strange thing.
Yes.
Any other questions for Annette? All right, I've done my awkward teacher pause, and there are no questions for Annette. Um, typically, we then, um, go to our folks who have showed up to speak to this particular, um, rental license application. Are we ready to do that, Annette?
Yes.
All right. Let's do that if we can. I think 455, is that, uh, David Strauss?
Yeah, yes, this is David Straub, yes.
All right, go ahead and, and if you want to speak to this generally, great. Also, if you could address, um, councilperson Erin Stevens' question about the alcohol, that would be great.
Sure, sure. So, uh, uh, thank you for, uh, having us as part of the agenda this evening and considering our application. I'll do, I'll do my best. There's a little disconnect between the video and the, and the phone, so I'm gonna take my eyes off the video because it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a bit awkward. With, with respect to the disconnects between the, um, the, uh, application that was presented and what will actually happen out there, there, you know, you're right, Annette, you pointed out some, uh, some, I, I guess, for lack of better terms, clause in the application. One's saying, is stating Detroit, and, uh, the, uh, the I, I, I guess blatant, um, uh, uh, statements that, um, uh, the landlord's going to be there monitoring for consumption of alcohol. That lease agreement that was included, um, was, uh, a, uh, boilerplate lease from the folks at MTH, and, uh, that, for the, that provision and some of that language that was in there isn't what would be presented to, um, any, uh, potential tenants for us. As you, as you know, and I, I think it is included with the packet, we do have underlying, or underlying, uh, community regulations and bylaws. And, uh, that's what our tenants would be governed by. Um, and, uh, that's what we, we'd be, uh, um, holding them to account for. I guess that's all I have to say with re, with respect to the application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Strauss. Any commissioner questions for Mr. Strauss other than what, yeah, any new questions for him? Okay, hearing none. Uh, discussion, uh, any discussion amongst commissioners about this, uh, rental license application? Hearing no discussion, and I'm looking at some of your faces, and they are looking like they want to talk. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the, uh, conditional, the class three rental license for 4001 Gallup Road.
Irene will second.
All right, we have a, a, a motion and a second for, um, a recommendation for an initial rental license, class three, uh, for 4001 Gallup Road. Annette, would you be so kind as to call the roll?
Yes. Casey?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Irene?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we have five ayes, zero nays. That's unanimous recommendation for the council to approve an initial rental license for 4001 Gallup Road. All right. With that, uh, item dispensed with, we can move on to the next one. Um, an initial rental license hearing for 3998 Mustang Road. Annette, do you have a staff report for us?
Yes, I do. One moment, please.
To see you guys know, I believe Jennifer Ferguson just entered in as an attendee.
Okay.
Or maybe this is, actually, there are still two numbers left in there from the public hearing, but
Okay.
But she might be in there.
This is, uh, let's see, the class three rental license, this is very, very, very similar to the last property that you reviewed. So this is a class three rental license for two unrelated persons or a family to occupy a dwelling a dwelling at 3998 Mustang Road. And the owner is Falcon Point Holdings, East Lansing, legal agent Robert Schroeder, East Lansing. This is identical to the last property that you reviewed. I believe the only difference in this one is that this is a two-bedroom, two-bathroom site condo, and I believe the last one was three-bedroom. Everything else actually is identical because it is the same project. There's the same lease thing that I had brought up before in the same, in the exact same project, so the same numbers, 102 units, 25 of these have sold. And I really have nothing additional that is different on this particular property than from the last one.
Thanks, Annette. Any commissioner questions for Annette before we give Mr. Strauss another crack at the apple?
I can show you a, oh, now we're all cold. We have a winter picture of this particular property.
All right, so hearing no questions for Annette, I believe we ought to give Mr. Strauss another shot at speaking to this one, just in case he has something different to say.
Hello. I don't think I'll go around the circular path that I did last time. I think my commentary is fractured as it may have been, holds the same position for this application, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Any new questions or concerns from commissioners for Mr. Strauss? Okay, hearing none after an uncomfortably long pause, we will open it up for discussion. Any commissioner comments that you'd like to make? Hearing none, all right. I am open to hearing a motion.
Larry Rosen, I'll move that we grant a class three license to 3998 Mustang Road.
This is Ed, I'll second it.
All right, so I've heard a motion from Larry to recommend an initial rental license for 3998 Mustang Road, and a second from Ed. Annette, would you be so kind as to call the roll?
Yes. Casey?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Irene?
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks, everybody. So that is a unanimous recommendation for the rental license to move on to the city council for 3998 Mustang Road. That leaves our last public hearing issue for the evening being the initial rental license hearing for 725 Grove Street. Annette, do you have a report for us?
I do, however, before I give the report, I am going to give a slight pause and allow for a check of a third caller that we have as an attendee.
Oh, we have a third caller.
Caller ending in 620, if you would like to speak, you have to state your name. And if you're here for a public hearing, you can do that at this time.
Is that you, Jennifer? We can't hear you, 620.
Yes, caller 620, you are unmuted. If you would like to speak on one of the public hearings, you can do that at this time.
Annette, is that the last three digits of Jennifer's number?
Let me look and see what I have on file. Of course, what I pulled up did not have her phone number on it.
I'm like 90% sure that that is her. That call came in right when she sent me an email saying that she is on the call.
On the call, but we are not hearing her.
That, I don't know whether she was on a smartphone or whether she was on a landline, but most likely her phone is muted via her own self rather than us here. So I would continue onwards and hope that it works out.
Okay. All right.
Well, want to try a staff report?
Yes, I will. Okay, we have a change here now. So this is an application again for a class three rental license allowing up to two hundred and-
Hello?
Hello, Jennifer?
Yeah. Wow, I haven't had technical problems like this ever, so, yes, it's me.
Well, it was your turn, I guess.
It's nice to hear your voice, Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late, I was having technical problems.
That is okay, we're glad you're here and with us, and you can-
I can.
Okay, so Jennifer, I am just introducing, doing a staff report for 725 Grove Street. The owner of the particular dwelling, this is a single-family house, so not a condominium. The owner is New Millennium Investment Properties of East Lansing and the legal agent Community Resource Management of East Lansing. The application was signed by Joseph Goodser. And I do know from our earlier public comment and check-in that we do have their representative, Mr. Sass, on the line when it's time for his public comment. And I do know that he is affiliated with Community Resource Management as their legal counsel and able to represent them. So this will be for the two unrelated. This house, single-family house, is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom dwelling with a one-car attached garage. Let's see, they recently purchased this property October of 2019. It's in an R2 zoning district, it is not in an overlay district. The property has been inspected, code corrections have been made. The appropriate floor plan, site plans, photos were attached. And I can scroll down to a photo if someone needs, again, right? Because it was snowing just a few months ago. We have another photo with the winter scene. So the first photo, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Now I am sharing a screen. The first photo is the front of the home there on the 700 block of Grove. It sits, if you are familiar with the street, it does sit on the west side of the street. And then that second photo is the back. So you can see it's got a built-in area there where it walks out to the back. There's a house on the other side. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have of me.
Any commissioner questions for Annette?
Yeah, just a brief one. So I take it this is a new rental. This was not a rental prior to this. This was a single-family dwelling.
Correct, it was an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling. The owner sold the property, C.R.M.C., and now applying for a rental license, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Annette? Okay, hearing none, we'll give Mr. Sass a chance to say a few words, if he'd like to, about 725 Grove Street.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate this time, commissioners, and we also appreciate the recommendation for a provisional license. And that being the case, unless you have questions, I don't have anything further to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sass. Any commissioner questions for Mr. Sass? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any discussion amongst commissioners about this rental license application? Okay, hearing no questions or concerns, discussion, I would invite a motion.
I'll motion, Irene will motion to approve.
All right, so we've got-
I'll second it.
All right, so we've got a motion by Irene to recommend to the city council an initial rental license for 725 Grove Street with a second by Larry. Annette, would you be so kind as to call the roll?
Yes. Casey?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Irene?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Thank you. Roll call is complete.
All right, so that's a unanimous 6-0 recommendation on the motion. So we have a recommendation to the city council that we get an initial rental license for 725 Grove Street. All right, so that concludes our public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. Onto new, and awesome, guys, I think we did a great job, by the way. I'll take a point of personal privilege here to compliment you all on how we managed that, and I'm so glad that Jennifer got to participate in that one as well. All right, so new business, Annette. An update regarding the status of the housing study?
Yes. Currently, the housing study is on hold, so my report is not significant, I will tell you, but I did want to let you all know and share with you that at this point, we do have that item on hold, kind of due to a couple of things, one being some of the complications that we're in, that we would be able to carry out, that were in the proposal during this time of COVID-19. The other being, we will be reassessing, of course, our budget pretty closely and kind of making decisions on where our priorities lie. And then if the housing study is to continue, I think we will see it continue in a slightly different format. I know I made the recommendation to Tom Farinbach that I would think that it would make sense to wait, and at least to wait until fall in my interpretation or thoughts, just because there's so much unknown right now. And what we have come September may look different than what we see today, and then we will need a baseline to start coming back from whenever that time is. So that is what I have to share on the status of the housing study for now, and I'm happy to take comment on that to consider or answer further questions.
I have a couple of, that's all right with you.
Sure, go ahead.
So what aspects, I guess, have been done so far, just like assessing the groundwork of like how many rentals we have, what leasing trends have been? I mean, the only reason I ask is because I definitely think that the actual amount of people here is different, and vacancy rates can be affected by that. But I am wondering to know, like, if there can still be work that can be done during this time period, I guess, just via the fact that, you know, even though people might be breaking leases right now, they probably signed them, you know?
Right. I think we want to go back, we did not sign the proposal, we did not start because of right about the time we had gotten authorization from council. It was within days, or at least we can have, that everything changed. So at that point, we just kind of put it on hold because there for a while, you know, some of the starting points in the proposal that we would have been signing a contract for and paying for some of the things were things that clearly could not be done to start with. So the proposal, I think, would need to be re-reviewed and rewritten, removing some of the things that are not going to take place. You know, anything that brings you in close, and I don't have it all in front of me right now, but anything that brings us in close contact, we certainly weren't going to be putting a few people in a van and taking them around town and pointing out different areas and talking about some of our, you know, historical things in our city. If at some point, I think we want to talk about, well, you know, how many rentals do we have? We know how many rentals we have in our community if we want to look a little bit beyond that. But then if we wanted to just kind of take a look at the selling price of things, what, how is it selling and what's happening in that area, that was one of the things we wanted to think about a little more, because how things were selling in February and how they're selling this summer and maybe what we see in September are all going to look potentially so dramatically different. And we want to be sure that the data that we collect is something that's going to be valid for at least a little while, and we didn't want to have data that, kind of like when we went into the recession, the whole, everything changed. So if everything's going to change, I guess we'd like to have data at that point. So that's where we're at right now.
This is Jennifer. How often, I forgot, are housing studies done in East Lansing?
Well, the housing study has not been something that's been on a particular schedule or something that's done regularly necessarily. I can tell you, because I've been working for the city for a while now, that in my early tenure, we did a few different housing studies. We contracted, I believe, some, and some we did with staff and interns. We had a different capacity back then, that we had a lot more people working in that area. I was one of the worst, and so I think everything has changed so dramatically. We, you know, we don't really have the capacity internally right now. And that's why it was kind of really exciting, and actually, I was really looking forward to this happening, I think, as many other people were, in that we were going to be contracting out for someone to do it. So it has been a number of years. I don't, I couldn't tell you the exact last time we ventured into this.
Thank you. And how long do you think the study, once it gets going, will take?
When we originally had looked at this and were about to sign the contract, we had a couple of touchpoints in the contract that we would be touching base with our person that was our company that was doing it. But we really anticipated at that point, we'd be starting in March, and that we would have some results by the end of the summer that we would be able to share. We were kind of anticipating a completion or almost total completion by the end of the summer, and then fall being able to really put it back in the hands of the city council, and then I'm sure all and many others to take a look at, and then kind of start digging into a little, the results, and what does that mean, and then how do we move forward?
No, Annette, I would just want to confirm what you were saying, but even maybe be even a little bit more pessimistic in that even thinking about the fall may be too soon because so much of the housing status and dynamics in this community relies upon where students are. And if the university continues not to have students on campus until some future time, then despite the fact that the housing will still be there, the dynamics, sale prices, rental rates, and so on, anything we would collect in the fall might be totally- anything we would collect in the fall might be totally unrealistic or unhistorical or ahistorical. And so it might be worthwhile to seriously hold off until we get some stability in the community and see what's going on. And so I, you know, I agree with what you're saying. It just may even be longer than that before we can do it. Yet, I, as you know, I firmly believe this is an important thing to do. I think it's very necessary to have these kind of data to do any kind of, any serious planning. But obviously, the dynamics may not be there until things settle down a little bit more. So I'm very much in support of your position.
Okay, thank you. Really noted.
Any other questions for Annette on the housing study?
Will the housing study be done regardless of finances? Or have, I'm sure you already, the city has money earmarked for this. Will that be something to reconsider? Or is this moving forward once there's more stability with students being back on campus, et cetera?
I think that's one of the things that, you know, we'll be working with the finance department. And I'll be talking over with George and Tom and looking at our budget. There's no doubt that the city budget is not what it was when we earmarked this money. So, you know, we will, of the priority will be, for budget, the priority will be, of course, maintaining our rental licensing program and being able to keep inspectors on staff and the support staff that we need to keep them on the road and doing what they do. So I think we just really need just a little bit of time to be able to assess over the next, at least, few weeks here, what our budget is going to look like.
So I have a follow-up for that then. So, I mean, this, that money was earmarked after a pass city council for this budget cycle, I assume, as an amendment. So would we be, would then you be exploring to put that as part of this coming budget that we haven't passed yet? Like, roll that over? I just, I know it's a fairly big priority for council, myself included. And I do imagine that on the list of priorities, that's going to be up there. And I just, I want to know kind of what the next steps are to make it happen. What I don't want to see happen is I don't want us to say, well, we don't know, and then us get a few months down the road and be like, well, we were going to do that, but then COVID hit. I still want that to be a, you know, something that we're constantly thinking about. Okay, when, I mean, I'm fine to talk about when the right time is, but I don't want this to be left behind.
Yeah, I don't either. I don't either. The budget, I, it's in the, I believe this is in your upcoming, the budget you are approving. The money was approved. I just need to double check on all that.
Okay, would you, would you mind, and then maybe emailing me too, or?
Yep.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments about housing study? Okay. Good deal. Thank you, Annette, for your update. Do we have any old business?
I did not have any on the agenda unless someone has something they needed to add.
Uncomfortable teacher pause. Okay, I'm taking silence as acquiescence that we don't have additional old business. Now we'll move on to staff reports. That's to our mayor, Pro-Tom Stevens. What you got for us today?
So I will be very, very quick. I am running a little bit over. I got a family group chat call that I was supposed to be on a little while ago, and that is all right. But we are currently in our Zoom budget season, going into our last public hearing on that next week. Housing-related issues, if you haven't seen already, there is a program that we are looking into, hopefully passing on the 26th, that would include some housing assistance for folks with mortgages and/or rentals if they meet an income requirement. That would be up to $2,000, one month of rent, and then extending more than that month of rent if they meet a certain amount of qualifications and do a certain amount of things, particularly one meeting with a housing advisor from Capital Area Housing Partnership, who's agreed to help us with this. Just again, thanking Annette, thanking them, thanking kind of our staff for working with this. This money is coming from the CARES Act that was passed federally. That's money that we can use to help COVID relief stuff. So that's kind of the one major housing thing. That is available on our website from the April 30th meeting. If you want to see that agenda item, it's also in the May 12th meeting, and it will be on the May 26th meeting, which is coming up this coming Tuesday, as well as our budget. And that's the last public hearing for that, and we're looking to pass that budget on that day. So if you do have any input that you want to give or any questions, just shoot me an email or feel free to call into that city council meeting. I will stop there, and if anybody has any other questions for me, I am more than willing to answer them before I have to sign off.
Any questions for Mayor Pro-Tom Stevens? All right, I think you're off the hook.
All right, seeing none. I'm going to sign off, guys. Sorry about that. Thank you.
All right, do we have any additional staff report? I see C-E-N-C staff, Annette.
Yeah, that was an old, cut and paste staff, it should be staff update. Yeah, so I did want to kind of carry on from what Commissioner Stevens said. I just have a couple of things, and one would be kind of a shout out to Capital Area Housing Partnerships. Larry's on the board, in case you don't know.
So is Irene.
I do want to give a shout out because I was getting calls, and not so much now. But I think at first, of course, everything was so unknown and kind of scary and abrupt for everybody. So I was feeling quite a few calls from tenants and, in the case of students, and tenants and tenants and their parents, about where could they go? Where could they get questions answered? Where could they get help? A lot of times, they really needed counseling, part of it, and how do they communicate with, you know, maybe their landlord and finding out what they can and cannot do. There was the executive order at one point about you could not be evicted. And but, you know, what people needed to understand is that they really didn't still pay their rent if they could. And so Capital Area Housing Partnerships was one of the resources that really was beneficial to me. They did a nice information piece that I was able to share with a lot of the people I was communicating with. And I will say, as well as Sue Webster, some of you may know. Sue works with MSU and is kind of the community liaison with, really, the community, not just East Lansing, but surrounding the university. And she put together a really good document, resource document also, that was specifically for students. So it was helpful for us because we were getting calls about things that really were a little bit out of our control in Bailey Wing. So we were able to work with them, and so I just wanted to make that known. And if you get questions, you know, we can take them and I'll share that information. And like I said, a lot of times, it seems like people just really needed help, mostly in the area of communication and how to navigate everything and where to go and where's the backstop if you need it and that kind of thing. Just to let you all know, of course, we have not been doing rental inspections since the stay home, stay safe order was issued. As far as how that really impacted our operation and what we do, then inspections, rental inspections, and for a while, really most construction inspections, were not something we could do. In the last few weeks, of course, construction was allowed to open up again. And so our trades inspectors are back, coming back on, doing more and more. They were doing emergency-type inspections before. Clearly, you could hire a contractor if you have a hole in your roof, you know, something that you needed to maintain your helmet, keep it safe. That work was allowed to go on through all of this time, of course, with safety protocols in place. So we canceled two and a half months of annual inspections and re-inspections. So we spent time doing that. We also held off on sending renewals because it did not make sense to be sending renewals to folks to call and pay their money and get their inspection when we really couldn't do that. And working remote, we really didn't have the capacity to manage all of that. So we've kind of been in a standstill. And so we are projecting, unless there's a change. And as you all know, change happens daily, right, with all this? So we are anticipating that we will be back the beginning of June. Inspectors will be, then, we already have inspections scheduled in June from March when we were working. So they'll, of course, start doing those, and then our office staff will be working to get back to the folks we have with and get them scheduled. And then we're also going to be sending out all the renewals for the last two months that we've not been able to. So we will slowly catch ourselves up. I think that in some respects, maybe that is okay because some of the work that landlords and property owners had to do, if they had to hire someone, they couldn't hire someone to do the work during that time anyway. So we're all kind of in a predicament. So we hope that come June, we start moving forward with all of this. And I just wanted to share that with you all so that you knew. Although it's all a day-to-day thing, and it's been discussed at the council level, so it's not any sort of a secret that there may be employees that don't come back right now for a little while out of full-time status. And there is some, I think it's CARES Act funding that helps, you know, fund employees that would be maybe working at a partial capacity. So we're really trying to get through this the best we can, keep all of our employees whole, and hopefully, at the end of it, be able to bring everybody back, you know, to where we were before it all started. So we're working through it. Our landlords have been pretty understanding so far. And then we've also had a few complaints that have come in, and we've been able to address some of the complaints just by working with the management virtually and finding out what was going on, what was happening. And then I work with a tenant to see that things are corrected, you know, and some of the more easier things to do. We have had to send inspectors out, housing inspectors out to follow up on a handful of complaint inspections that we wanted to be sure the occupants were safe and that the violations at hand were being taken care of because they were of a nature that they needed to be and could be even during our stay home, stay safe order. So it was kind of my update, and I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Have you seen an increase in evictions? Or I may be ignorant on this, are they allowed during this time? I don't think they are, right?
I don't think they are. They were not allowed to evict through, I don't have the date. There was a date in April, and I am quite certain that that order was extended to some degree. I did not read the fine print.
The order was extended to July 11th, I think.
Got it. Thank you.
Or June 11th. I'm sorry, I said June 11th. There's a federal moratorium on foreclosure stuff for like, evictions though, through July.
Thank you. I knew that, but forgot.
And I've talked to only, I mean, I've talked to landlords, but I've only asked, I guess, a couple how things are for them, and it sounds like they, I mean, it sounds like, for the most part, rent's getting paid. But again, that's a, you know, two or three out of, you know, the thousands we have. So that is no scientific study that I have there.
Is there one thing that you're really concerned about that may reveal itself with all of it, once the dust settles? Or you've just taken it like day by day and hoping, you know, things won't be so bad?
Yeah, it's, no, things I know, well, we're taking it day by day. That's really the best way to survive all this, I think. But I think if you're asking me what I foresee could be challenges for us in the way of rental licensing and tenants and occupants. And, you know, the one is, I think there's going to be more deferred maintenance that we all have to catch up on, and I say "we all" because the landlords now have to get in to some houses that maybe they would have been in earlier because it's kind of the turnover-type season. But because a lot of them staffed down for the same reasons we all did, you know, they weren't supposed to have a half a dozen employees inside of a large house working on it, kind of thing, or cleaning it, or also having to put together their safety protocols. Because as you can imagine, you're going into someone's home. Get it, get it right. So, at least in our community, that's the most common thing happening right now. I think I have some, with the deferred maintenance, we will, we'll see. And then the other part is just bringing everybody back and keeping everybody safe. We have protocols that we've put together to change regularly. But to keep our inspectors safe, you know, wearing masks, going out into the field, we're telling them they're free to ask questions. Also, people, if they come to someone's house, they really should ask, how do you feel? You know, if they want to ask those questions, they can't, if they're uncomfortable, they don't have to go in. All of that impacts, I think, us.
Thank you.
Working with our student population. You know, when you're, and less frightened of things. I don't know if frightened is the word, but less cautious. Sometimes we be a little cautious with time. You know, they're not going to be social distancing. And so I think something that is going to be a challenge for us, I think there will be some students that will call us, ask us to do something about that, and some parents, because I've gotten a little bit of that. And some of it will be things that we do not have control over on someone's private property.
Do you see the commission's workload increasing or pretty much staying about the same through all this?
You know, I suspect about the same, like when it comes to the rental licensing, I think there could be new things that we don't even see coming yet that may be on the commission's plate as far as from city council. If they're looking at ordinance changes or something that comes about because of the new way we're all going to be living or the world that's upon us. So there could be some ordinance work potentially, I would see, that may come your way that we never anticipated. I guess that's the part that's yet to be seen and kind of unknown for us all.
Bring it. All right. Thank you, Annette.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Annette? I have a question, Annette. Do you guys, um, do you, I haven't had a chance to look at the city's, like, return to work plans. I don't even know if that's publicly available at this point. I mean, I'm assuming, are you going to have options for folks to still work remotely if they are able?
I think so. It's one of those things that's evolving and changing regularly. And we meet, you know, as managers meet as a group, there's been a facilities group that's been meeting too, as far as how we enter the building or employees or the public. You know, we'll have, will be, I don't know if we're going to open the building right away. I haven't even heard that, if it will open to the public generally on June 1st or if there'll be some reduced, you know, is it open part of the time? We are really, as an organization, going to be continuing to, I think I can say this on behalf of our organization, you will see that we'll be continuing to really promote as much online contact as we possibly can. We're going to be working more and more to making that easier for you all as residents of the community to do more and more online. It's hard for some folks. I've already talked to some that are like, well, can I come in? It's hard for some folks. I've already talked to some that are like, well, can I come in and, and just pick my things up? And I'm like, oh, no, you can't. The building's not even open to the public. And in fact, employees, it's not easy for us. You know, we have protocol we have to go through to get into the building. If, you know, depending, I mean, police and fire, of course. But so I think that my sense from the city manager so far is that if you can work remote, you'll be encouraged to do as much as you can remote. There's some folks that just can't. We don't have city resources that everyone has home with them. And so I think we're going to see, and that will be a part of the reduced work hours for folks, then we'll have less people in the building at any given time. And that will help with the social distancing also. I know the court right now is working on, working, they're doing things, arrangements or whatever, I think, as much as they can, Zoom and whatnot. So there's less activity from our court side and there will be even when the whole building opens.
Thanks.
Yep.
Ed, do I see a question or a comment on your face?
Oh, I'm just thinking how complicated everything is, right? And I appreciate all the work that I was doing.
The new every day.
All right, last call for questions or concerns for Annette. All right, folks, look at us. We're all the way to adjournment. So unless there's an objection, I say this meeting is adjourned.
No objection.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.